We have over 35 jobs posted on Edjoin right now. And I'm willing to guess that that 13.7 that has been passed on will help fill quite a few of those jobs. If you pass them to the employees as the state had intended. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and end it with that and say, thank you very much. And please appreciate us and every employee in this district. We're not the bad guys. None of us are the bad guys. We just all want to be treated fairly. Thank you very much.
What, what, Ms. Per?
I wanted to know that I heard that some teachers were capped out, right? With COLA, like they're capped out under salary.
No, what she mean, what she's reading? Sorry.
No, wait, wait, let me ask my question. Is it one five or five zero?
She said six zero.
Teachers. Six zero. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michelle. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to continue now with superintendent comments. Mr. Patterson?
So I just wanted to say, you know, Ivan's in the room right now. And we're finishing up our last round of conversations with our classified employees to talk about the unique needs of the various positions that fall under the CSCA umbrella. Had an opportunity to attend HOT with Mr. Sanabria. So that was great to see him leading the Pledge of Allegiance in front of that huge group and did a fantastic job. We are having a conversation with the Whittier Foundation to talk about them partnering with us to restore the Emma Wicker Auditorium. There's been a lot of legwork with regard to that because it does require some historical architectural designs to be done. But the hope would be for us to be able to have that operate similar to the Vic Lopez and what that does for Whittier Union. So schools across our district would be able to go and perform there. We are going to be able to take advantage of some of the funding under ELOP to be able to provide the equipment and the sound and the Madonna-esque microphones that you need to be able to have those kinds of performances. So that leads into, you may have seen on social media, our Spooktacular. We are going to be, in order to try to reinforce some of the things with regarding to physical fitness and health and safety and involvement with the community, we are going to pay for the registration of anybody who is a staff member or a student in our district to go ahead and run. That is going to be funded under, out of our Extended Learning Opportunity Program since it is a Saturday and after-school hours. So just another opportunity, if you have not signed up as a staff member or as a student, we will pick up the entrance fee for you. So just another neat little thing that we have going on. And I was able to also attend coffee, this is what they call it, Coffee with a Cop at Panera in, down in the Whitwood Plaza. So it's just another great opportunity. I met the Whittier PD PIO. So we have another connection to where we're going to be able to see if there's ways that we can shore up some of the support with WPD and the ways that they provide collaboration with our district. We already have a great contact with CHP Officer Salazar, who's going to be doing some work with our district. So we're very excited about that. And we look forward to the EEWE bargaining team's counter to our proposal that we gave at our last session. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Thank you so much.
The Spooktacular, we can walk, right?
Yeah, most people walk.
Yay.
Or a lot of people walk.
Yeah. I was just going to ask about that. Thank you. This is Kenny pulling that up. All right. Okay, Mr. Patterson is going to put up our public comment slide. We welcome the public commenting at our meeting, at every meeting that we have. And Mr. Patterson is going to guide us through the process this evening. Just be sure that you are looking at our comments, that you're respectful in terms of your comments as well, and we greatly, greatly appreciate that. Mr. Patterson?
So just a reminder, we are at elementary district and we do have students that are in the audience. So we want to be able to make sure that we follow that guidance. We do have several speakers. There is no topic that exceeds our 20-minute total based upon the public comment cards that I do have here. We have a number of speakers. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. We do have one speaker that provided artifacts. So when Ms. Sandoval, I'm going to, Ms. Sandoval, I'm going to send your pictures around right now so that they can look at them, so they can see them before your comments. But I'm going to ask the half of the group to stand over on the right-hand side just so that we can make sure we do this in a timely manner. So, Mr. Papas, Ms. Sandoval, Ms. Lopez, and Ms. Ortiz, please. And please just introduce yourself, please, and then we will start.
Good evening. My name is Pano Papas. I'm a first-grade teacher at Ocean View Elementary, and I've had 35 years in this district. I think I'm number six on the seniority list. Okay? When the district was experiencing a severe budget crisis, we teachers willingly partnered with you and accepted the challenge. Every other night, we emptied our own trash cans, cleaned our own sinks, and kept our rooms clean because of the lack of custodians due to the budget cuts. In keeping with supporting the district, we readily accepted the fact that we would not have a salary increase for an extended amount of time. When called to the challenge of leaving our classrooms, learning new technology, and turning our homes into virtual classrooms at a moment's notice, we accepted the challenge and handled it gracefully. We returned to the classroom, and our health was risked by being exposed to a student population which may have had COVID, but we continued to do our part. Yet again, we partnered with the district when asked to participate in instructional strategies and philosophies such as accountable talk, focus walls, and ICANN statements. We spend time outside of our working hours responding to parent texts on Parent Square, posting on Instagram so that our parents are aware of the learning which takes place in our classrooms, and keeping current with the issues such as active shooter training. We have in good faith done our part to the best of our ability. It is because we care about children and we want to be the best professionals that we can be. A strong and healthy relationship is a two-way street. It should be the district's turn now to do their good-faith part by giving us the full salary increase which the state has given to us because of the increased cost of living. The relationship between the district and its teachers shouldn't be adversarial. We should work together as a team to have the best possible outcome for the students we are responsible for. I'm asking the district now to do their part by giving us the cost-of-living salary increase that was given by the state solely for that purpose. We shouldn't have to ask, plead, or beg. We should have received it immediately. We are a team, and we should act like it. We have shown and proven our support for you, and I respectfully ask that you do the same for us. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, board members. My name is Sandra Sandoval, and I am a teacher in our district working on my 25th year, quarter of a century as part of it. I am here tonight to speak out about the inequity that is prevalent in our district. We are given the spiel of how equity this and equity that when it comes to educating the children that come into our classrooms, but the facilities being provided to them are not equitable by any means. Certain schools continue to have preferential treatment with upgrades while others continue to be left in disrepair. It is my understanding that under the Williams Act, facilities are to be maintained to a clean, safe, and in good repair status. This is my first year at Laurel after spending 23 years at Mulberry and thinking we at Mulberry were the forgotten school of the district. Oh, no. That honor now goes to Laurel. The phrase that keeps running through my head, and this is where my Mexican mother's Spanish-thinking brain comes out. No más donde la suegra ve. Only where the mother-in-law sees. In other words, to please the public, but the reality is different. As you drive by Laurel on Lambert Boulevard, you see the beautiful murals, but wow, the inside structures are appalling. The first day I went into my classroom, which was the first week in August, I had to deep-clean my classroom instead of setting it, setting it up because it was disgusting with caked-on dirt that immediately aggravated my sinuses. I placed a work order for the filters to be changed out in both the HVAC and the air purifier, and only the HVAC was done. I asked once again to have a work order placed, and it was, but they just came in and wiped it down with tissues from my classroom. Not changed, but just simply wiped down. This is my first year back in an actual classroom since March 2020. I have already had to deal with both a sinus infection and an ear infection, and it's only October 10th. I didn't experience these things when teaching remotely or last year as part of the Virtual Learning Academy. On the first day on the Laurel campus, I tripped on a hole in the blacktop in front of my classroom that was not properly marked. I asked for a work order to be placed, and it was placed, but the hole wasn't looked at until about a month later. Since the work order was placed, one of my students has tripped on the hole and scraped their leg, and a teacher about a week and a half ago tripped on that same hole. The hole is still there as of today. Last week, I emailed Mr. Patterson and Mr. Ben Lopez about the raw sewage issue that was not properly cleaned up after our drains were being looked at. The same raw sewage that was being tracked into classrooms. Classrooms that have carpets that have not been properly deep-cleaned since this occurred. My question is, why is Laurel not being equally maintained as our other schools? As you can see by the pictures provided, this is quite not up to par with what you experienced seeing at other schools. How and when is this going to be corrected to ensure the health and safety of the students and staff at Laurel? Thank you.
Ms. Sandoval, can I ask a question? Just for clarity, Ms., was this reported to your admin at the site? Do they know this, they have that?
Oh, which part?
Any of this, all this, actually.
Yes. And to my understanding is that the admin has also been asking about the raw sewage and everything, and not until an email was sent by myself and a parent from our school was this, began to be corrected as far as the sewage portion. Because when you see my pictures where it says the before and after, the before was on Thursday morning. That's when, because the maintenance people were on campus on Wednesday. And then on Friday is when we had outside company, and on Friday morning was when the pressure washers were on campus in order to finally clean. That's the after portion where you see the difference between the two, how it looked before and how it looked after.
All right. Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I do ask, Madam President, if Mr. Patterson can kind of look into this.
We, we're in communication with the three of us.
Okay. So then kind of give us an update.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I also want to thank you so much for sharing. And Mr. Pat, I communicated with Mr. Patterson immediately, and I think that Mr. Patterson did as well. So thank you so much for bringing that again to our attention. Ms. Patterson?
Hi, before I begin, can you read all the names for the Williams complaint speakers tonight?
Boris Savalos, Julie Savalos, Maria. It's not identified here. So if you guys can go stand over there, please?
No, they're, go ahead and say their names. They're going to yield their time.
Excuse me?
They're going to yield their time.
Boris Savalos?
Jared.
Okay, Jared?
I yield my time.
Okay. Julie?
I yield my time.
Okay. Maria? Okay. And Anthony?
Yield.
Okay.
There's one more, Diane?
Oh, Diane, you're correct. One, two, three, four, five. You have 18 minutes, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you. I'm going to set my timer because last time I went over and then...
I started mine already.
Okay. All right. Good evening, board, district staff, teachers, parents, and members of the Whittier community. I'm here now three board meetings in a row to discuss my Williams complaint and uniform complaint. On tonight's agenda, the discussion item, Williams Quarterly Report on Uniform Complaints, will be presented by our superintendent, Mark Patterson. As you can recall, I filed a Williams complaint on August 30th by email and August 31st by form because students at my school were without their state-approved and district-adopted core math curriculum envisioned.
May I interrupt you for a moment? Would you please make sure that you're addressing? No, no. Would you please make sure that you're facing us and addressing the board? Thank you. Rather than addressing the audience? Thank you.
I stopped my time at 33 seconds. Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to start my time again. And I was where? Hold on a second, before I start my time?
You have 17 minutes, Ms. Lopez.
I have, I'm at 33 seconds. Let me find my space. Okay. As you can recall, I filed a Williams complaint on August 30th by email and August 31st by form because students at my school were without their state-approved and district-adopted core math curriculum envisioned. Today is October 10th, 41 days later, and the problem still exists in my students' classrooms, classrooms across my students' campus, as well as the other nine elementary school campuses in our district. Tonight, Mr. Patterson will present this form to the board that he must submit to the Los Angeles County Office of Education by October 14th. Mr. Patterson, on this form, you indicate that the district received one complaint between the first quarter, July 1st to September 30th. Again, this is to the LAECO. This is for Williams Lawsuit, Seventh Minute Quarterly Report on Uniform Complaints. Under Instruction Materials, you state that there's one. This is your signature, right?
I can't see it from there. But it's the same document that we have.
So you put, under a number of complaints received in this quarter, you say one, correct? You just filled this out on October 3rd, correct?
Ms. Lopez, this is for you to discuss.
It's not a discourse.
Oh. Okay. So, okay, so Mr. Patterson put one complaint received on instruction materials between July 1st and September 30th. He said, under a number of complaints resolved, that that, my complaint has been resolved. Okay. Is my Williams complaint the complaint that's being placed on this form? Okay, he's not going to answer. All right. So if this is my complaint, has it been resolved? I have yet to receive a final deposition. I want to remind the district and the board that per your district policy, you have 20 days to fix the problem and 30 days to resolve the problem. For the California Department of Education, the Los Angeles County Office of Education, and the ACLU, the district has an additional 15 days to give the final report of your investigation findings into my Williams complaint to me. To clarify, from start to finish, the district has 45 days in total to fix, resolve, and give me the report of your findings. As mentioned, we are on day 41 of the complaint. Do we agree that day 45 is this Friday, October 14th? Mrs. Seviss, you're not on the board. Do you agree that this Friday, October 14th is the 45th?
Dr. Seviss is not going to engage with you either, Ms. Lopez. This is a public comment.
Again, I ask, has my complaint been resolved? After contacting the CDE, LAECO, and ACLU, these three agencies have confirmed that my interpretations of several California Education Code laws are in fact 100% accurate. That means that California school districts are required to provide students with state-approved and district-adopted curriculum. The law states you're allowed to supplement with non-state-approved and non-district-adopted curriculum. The key word here is supplement. Our district webpage entitled Curriculum and Textbooks clearly states that the district understands this law. Let me read from the district webpage. Again, this is our district website, our webpage on curriculum and textbooks. We have standards-based curriculum. We have adopted textbooks. Under adopted textbooks, it states, "California Education Code 60605. The State Board of Education has the constitutional authority to adopt instructional materials for grades 1 through 8 and statutory authority to adopt instructional materials for kindergarten aligned to state content standards. Instruction materials serve as the primary mode of access for California students to state's content standards and the knowledge and skills they must master. The following is the list of the standards-based instructional materials adopted by the State Board of Education and approved for our use by the East Whittier City School District. For K through 5 mathematics, it is envisioned math." If we further go down, we have supplemental materials. Under supplemental materials, it states, "Instructional resources are utilized in addition to..." The adopted textbooks are called supplemental materials. They provide additional practice and address gaps identified in the curriculum. Under math, our supplemental resource is Eureka Math. Supplemental is Eureka Math. Not core. So I just wanted to throw the question out there, even though they're not going to answer. Is our state-approved and district-adopted curriculum envisioned? Is this correct? Okay. Eureka Math is our district's non-state-approved and non-district-adopted curriculum. Correct? So if my Williams complaint is resolved, that would mean that all students at my student's school and the nine other elementary schools in our district will be teaching envisioned in class, and students will be doing their homework from the envisioned workbooks at home. Is that correct? Okay. My students, as of today, October 10th, 2022, are still not utilizing envisioned in the classroom or at home. Now, I just want to remind you that I have been in contact with the CDE, LAECO, and ACLU. Specifically, I have been in contact with the CDE's Uniform Complaints Department as well as LAECO's Uniform Complaints Department, specifically the Williams Complaint Department that handles instructional materials insufficiencies. Let me remind you, if the school district would like to implement a non-state-approved core curriculum, they need to complete the same review process laid out by the CDE. Before a district pilots a program, they need to submit the instructional materials to the CDE's Social Content Review Department. When you search the CDE's Social Content Review Database, Great Mind's Eureka Math Engage, Jr. has not been reviewed. I confirmed this through email with the CDE and had them double-check to make sure that my search results were in fact correct. And they confirmed through email that Eureka Math has not been reviewed for social contact. Content. What does that mean? It means that our district has not formally piloted, implemented, or adopted Eureka Math as our core math curriculum. On October 3rd, I requested our district's core state-approved and district-adopted curriculum materials for my students. I picked up those materials on Friday, October 7th. I noticed that my students did not receive the companion workbooks for social studies and science, so I requested them. I was notified today that our contracts for the social studies and science workbooks have expired and that no elementary school in our district has them. Now, I homeschool the last two and a half years through our district and taught grades kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade at home. I know that homeschool students do receive the surplus of workbooks left over from those contracts. So when I taught kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade, I have both social studies and science textbooks, and I have both social studies and science workbooks. Let's be clear. I want to show you. These are the materials that I was given for my first grade. These are all the district-approved, state-approved, I'm sorry, state-approved and district-adopted curriculum. So wonder, we have hardcore science, we have reflections for social studies, we have envisioned for math. I got the same bag. My fourth grader. Which is wonder, hardcore science. It's hardcore reflections for social studies and envisioned for math. Remember, I requested the state-approved and district-adopted curriculum for my kids. And you may be asking why they did this. Let's be clear. By Williams Legislature, my request for materials was granted because students by law need access to their state-approved and district-curric, district-adopted curriculum at school and at home. I am now going to submit a Williams complaint for social studies and science because our students do not have access to their textbooks at home, they do not have access to their textbooks digitally, and they do not have access to their workbooks at school and at home. Let me point out that means that we are up for textbook adoption in math, science, and social studies. Our envisioned math curriculum is a 2015 edition. That's the first edition when it was switched over to Common Core. Envision has since revised this edition several times. Have we been able to look at those materials? We have not. Our social studies textbooks were published in 2007. When I was teaching my son through the textbooks last year, they kept referring to Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger. Our science textbooks were published in 2022 years ago. Mrs. Seviss, Mr. Patterson, and the board, we can do better than that. Our thousands of elementary school students deserve better than that. And please don't say it's a money issue. The CDE and LAECO both say textbook adoption is a small fraction in expenditures in comparison to the amount of money our district receives in state and federal funding. Parents, please contact Mrs. Seviss, Mr. Patterson, and the board and let them know you too want textbook adoptions this year for math, social studies, and science. I feel like I'm begging, like the teachers for their COLA. I feel like I'm begging for state-approved and district-adopted materials that my students and the thousands of students in our district are entitled to by law. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Madam Patterson, President, I just wanted, the speaker just noted that she did not get a resolution to her Williams complaint. Superintendent Patterson, can you clarify that?
The, the letter was sent via certified mail to where we deem that our investigation is closed. Ms. Lopez retained legal counsel, and their counsel is working with our counsel.
Okay. Why did I receive, why did I retain legal counsel? Is it?
Ms. Lopez?
No, no, I still have, let me...
You concluded your remarks.
No, it's okay. I'll, I'll continue. I still have seven minutes.
Ms. Lopez, that's the end of your discussion time.
No, it's not. I have my 11:37.
Your comments are over.
I want to know where my, I want to know where my resolution is. The reason why I attained a lawyer is because you attained a lawyer.
We'll have you have a discussion with Mr. Patterson after the meeting or at a different time. But this is the public's con, your public comment session, and yours is done. So we need to move forward.
Is anyone interested where my resolution went?
This is not a question-and-answer session. You had your time. We respectfully got your time. You excused, and now we're going to move to the next section. But you're welcome to meet with Mr. Patterson and Dr. Seviss after.
Mr. Patterson, I just want to know where you sent the letter. I didn't hear.
To your home.
Oh, okay, because I haven't received it. I check my mailbox every day.
Is there any other comments that you would like to make, Mr. Patterson?
No.
All right. Okay. We're going to continue with...
Can you resend the email as well as the letter? Because it was sent via email as well as my letter, by mail, certified mail.
All right. We're going to continue with a discussion and a presentation this evening to the board. And our communications update is going to be by Antonio. Thank you so much.
Good evening, board and members of the East Whittier community. My name is Antonio Gonzalez. I'm the communications coordinator for our district. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting on the communications work that we've done over the past year and also talk about some of the opportunities for growth as we move forward. So at the beginning of last year, we created a communications plan which was comprised of five main objectives. Year one was really about laying the foundation for those plans and for those objectives. And now in year two, we are really starting to grow and build on that foundation and introduce some new things along the way. So I'm going to go through each of these five objectives, talk about some of the work we've done, and then also identify some opportunities as we, as we move forward. So for our first objective, which is to maintain positive relationships with internal and external stakeholders through clear, informative, and timely information. When we first started this last year, we were still going through, really in the midst of the pandemic. And so we experienced many changes with health orders and mandates and everything associated with COVID-19. And so for us, we really, it was really important for us to stay kind of ahead of the curve when it came to new information. So we were able to send out numerous community letters through ARI's Parent Square, which is our communications platform that we use here at the district, also flyers and resources so that our community was very well-informed on, on COVID issues and everything related to that. We've also been able to do some, some new stuff, introduce some new things, one of those being the superintendent community chats. We hosted three of those last year. And those were really an opportunity for our staff and our parents and our families to have two-way dialogue with our district leadership. There really was no agenda. There was no structure, really. It was just kind of a conversation about any, any topic under the sun. So there were some good things that came out of that, of those opportunities. And... And I think it was beneficial for both sides. We've also been utilizing Thought Exchange, which is a survey platform. Most recently, we sent out a survey regarding our Broad Course of Study Phase Two Initiative. And I included some of the, the numbers from that Thought Exchange down below. And as you can see, we had over thirty-seven hundred participants in that, in that survey, which is far more than we've ever had in any other Thought Exchange. So we were able to pull together some good data and some information that we'll use to implement in our Broad Course of Study initiative. And then on the student side, we of course have our student board member, Mr. Sanabria, who will be with us throughout the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And our student advisory committee as well. In terms of opportunities, things that we can continue to grow on. Go back, sorry. We're going to be launching a trimester newsletter at the end of each trimester, starting at the end of our first trimester this year. That's going to be kind of a highlight reel, if you will, a snapshot into kind of what's been going on district-wide at all of our schools. And so that'll be a, a district-wide communication that'll go out. And I think that'll be good for our community to see, you know, all the great things that are going on in our schools. So moving on to our second objective, which is to promote and celebrate the success and accomplishments of our students, teachers, faculty, and staff. Obviously, this is really important to us, we want to celebrate and recognize all the great people and the great things that have been going on at our schools. I've listed some things on the slide that we've been able to recognize on our social media platforms. Obviously, our Employees of the Year, our PBIS Awards, our Attendance Awards, our Summer Academy Staff, our Best Schools, and the U.S. News and World Report. We also have a number of recognition weeks that we celebrate as a district, teacher appreciation, week of the administrator, which is actually this week. Nurse Appreciation, Attendance Awareness Month, which was last, which was September. And our Start With Hello, which we celebrated in September as well. Number of opportunities we could still, we're going to continue to implementing and grow on. One is a staff spotlight series, which we're going to be launching shortly. We're going to start with our Employees of the Year from, from each school. And what we're going to try to do is try to tell their story a little bit more, kind of pull back the curtain and, and so our community can kind of see who they are and, you know, all the great things they do for our students. You know, we want to kind of talk about how long they've been with the district and, and what their role is and maybe some fun facts that if they would like to share. So that'll be something that we're going to launch soon. We're also going to be launching a Did You Know campaign. I'm working with Dr. Aceves currently on kind of the nuts and bolts of how that's going to work. But the goal there is to try to shed light on some of the things that people may not know about throughout our district or people, or people that folks may not be aware of. Talking about things like our intervention specialists and the, and the great work that they do for our students and our school counselors and the work that they do for mental health throughout the district. So that's something that we're going to be launching as well. And then of course, our PBIS work, we're going to be putting together a compilation video with all the activities and things going on throughout the schools throughout the year. Our middle school bands do a great job, they're involved in a number of performances throughout the year, so we want to be able to highlight those. I mentioned the Broad Course of Study, and then we want to continue to promote our college and career readiness and our school sports, which have restarted again. Going to goal number three, which is utilizing new media and emerging platforms to communicate with our audiences. Anybody that uses social media can kind of see that the short, short-form video content is kind of taken over and that's what does really well in terms of engagement. So we've, you know, tried to post more of the, the Instagram reels and that type of content. I've screenshotted a couple insights from a couple different reels that we had posted, so you can kind of see the engagement. One was a graduation kind of compilation video, another one was had to do with our Chromebook distribution for our middle school students. As you can see, both had over, well over four thousand views and across the board, you can kind of see the engagement in terms of likes, comments, shares, and saves. So we want to continue to kind of get that engagement and, and, you know, kind of spread our, our message throughout the, the community using these platforms. We've also created some more long-form video content, our dual-language immersion video, which was produced last year to kind of promote that program at SIRIS. And our Attendance Awareness Video, which we launched in September for Attendance Awareness Month. The important thing about those videos is that our students were heavily involved in the production of those, which I think is a good, it's a good opportunity to kind of empower, you know, empower the student voice on those platforms. So we'll continue to, to develop that. And then our YouTube page, we've kind of gone in there and organized it and created playlists for certain things. And of course, our board meetings are all live-streamed on YouTube, so that's another way we're utilizing new media. As far as opportunities, we just want to increase the amount of that short-form video content that we're creating. As well as some of the things I mentioned in the previous slide, utilizing video to highlight some of those, you know, the, the middle school bands and PBIS and things of that nature. So moving on to objective four, which is to develop audience growth and brand awareness through paid, owned, and earned media. So I'll just kind of explain each of those and give some examples. Paid media refers to anything that comes out of our pockets to generate awareness and publicity. So we've, we've had numerous Google camp, ad campaigns, Facebook and Instagram ad campaigns promoting things like open enrollment, dual-language immersion, and things of that nature. We also have other forms of paid, paid media such as the sponsored golf tee box at the Hathaway Golf Tournament recently. We also have a, a display ad in the Whittier Chamber brochure, which is that, that first image on the, on the right there. In terms of own media, own media is anything that we produce, design, create ourselves, and, and that's pretty self-explanatory. But it kind of goes beyond that in the sense of it adds our opportunity to differentiate our brand from, from others. And so, you know, for example, that Apple logo is, we put that on everything, that color scheme of the, you know, the maroon and, and navy. We utilize that to kind of make us unique and comes across their, their feed. Some examples of that are, of course, our social media platforms, our, our website, our YouTube page, any infographics, banners, marketing materials that we create. Now, earned media refers to any type of publicity or, or coverage that comes to us through an outside source. So we have our press releases that we send out to the chamber and that are published in their monthly release and on their website as well. And then even like shares on social media can be considered earned media, you know, people sharing our, our content and hopefully generating more followers and more engagement. As far as opportunities in this goal, we want to continue to build out our website. I've been able to meet with some of our departments within the district and identify some things that we need to, to change. And we've made some of those changes, there's still some work to be done, but the idea is just to make things eas, easily findable or searchable. And able to, you know, able to be easily used by our staff and our community. And then after we implement that, we'll kind of focus on the design of it and, and want to change some certain things. We've done some work there, also, we just want to kind of continue to explore different media coverage opportunities, you know, within our Whittier community. And so that, that will be for goal four, moving on to objective five. Objective five is to achieve and maintain partnerships with the institutions of Whittier and the surrounding community. We've done this in a variety of ways over the past year. Our Whittier Chamber of Commerce events, you know, every month, myself and Mr. Patterson and Michigan Kennedy attend Wake Up Whittier, which is a networking event. That's a really good, a good opportunity for us to kind of touch base with our partnership, with our partners and an opportunity to kind of build new relationships, which we've done. A great example that is Gil Sweetabilities, who is a company that provides the cookies in the back there at every board meeting. We were able, actually to meet them at a Whittier Chamber event and just got to talking and, and realized that she had student, children who went to school in our district. And so we're really excited about the development of that relationship and utilizing them for more district events. Speaking of events, Engage East Whittier, we had that last year at the end of the year. And it was a, I would consider it a, a good success, you know, I know a lot of people in this room were there as well. As you could tell from the, the pictures on the bottom there, there's quite a few people, our room was pretty packed. It was just a great opportunity to bring everyone together, all of our partners together, to just promote everything, all the good, all the good stuff that's going on throughout our schools. We also have a number of community events that we're involved with, the Christmas Parade, for example, you know, last year we had a float with student representatives. That was a lot of fun for them and a good chance for us to get out and, and participate in, in a community event. And then as Mr. Pat, Mr. Patterson mentioned before, the Spooktacular Five K Run slash Walk. We have over three hundred people right now, I think, signed up, which, you know, so we're expecting a, a big turnout there. I've also personally met with the Whittier Chamber of Commerce to kind of garner some resources for our Broad Course of Study initiative. Whether it's someone who would be interested in teaching a class or giving a guest lecture or providing some type of resource for us. So we've kind of have a, a list of leads, I guess, in, in the, within the community. So that's something that we'll continue to, to build. In terms of opportunities, we just want to increase our visibility at, at all of these, all of these different events and, and things we're doing within the community. Wake Up Whittier, for example, you know, hosting a table, making sure we're giving off raffle items and just making sure we're getting our name out there as much as we can to those. Because it, it really does make a difference, as I mentioned, with, you know, Gil's, you know, you never know when you can meet someone that could become a partner. So that's really it for those, those five objectives and be happy to answer any questions.
That was great, Board, would you like to make a comment, anybody, Mrs. Kennedy?
I, I thank you very much for that, a lot of information. I know it's a growing department and you have a lot of things, I could say, evolving over the last year or so and it's continued to grow. So it's nice to be able to see all those positive things that are happening. Though we know there are some negative things that need to be fixed and stuff, as evident even from today. And, but focusing on that, we're still focusing on the stuff that needs to be worked on, but it's nice to be able to show the highlights and the things that are happening at the school site. So thank you for taking lead on that and looking forward to, to continue to build, continue to grow. Because I know even on the website, just kind of search everything, even a one, a, a page where everyone, even the school sites. And so a, a, a family or a parent can kind of take a snapshot at every school site and see what's going on. And so it's, it's things that ten years ago, you know, we, we, wasn't there. So I'm looking forward to the department growing and, and talking about the things that you're wanting to do.
Thank you, Mrs. Patterson.
That you're developing the webpage that's easily to navigate, I'm the one that's always complaining on the webpage. There's also, I don't know if, if you, you probably are updated with, with the copywritten laws that are being updated right now with all of social media entities. So if you, we might want to, you might want to look into those, just as a suggestion. Because even though it is something that you repost and it's from somebody else, there is rubbish that needs to be added to it or we can be sued. Just wanted to let you know, if you don't know already. But I think it's great, all the work that's, that's going into, into this. And I have a question about the apple. Are we branding that apple, are we trademarking it as in paying?
No, it is not.
To trademark it.
It is not trademarked.
Okay, will we be trademarking that, will we be, or will, will?
We, we didn't have any plans to trademark it?
Because it sounds like that's being branded, so if it's being branded, we should probably own it. We maybe might, or we might want to consider.
We can definitely look into what that entails.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy, Mr. Patterson, any comments? No, no, Mrs. Sanabria? I would just like to compliment you, Mr. Gonzalez, because when I joined the board, the level of social media that we have currently was not in place. And it is so beautiful to see how we've grown in the short period of time from twenty eighteen to now, in terms of the positive aspects of classroom sharing, school sharing, principal sharing. And prior, when Mr. Patterson was trying to do it all, it was nearly impossible. And so I just want to thank you so much for everything you're doing to make sure that you're featuring schools, you're featuring community events. And I know that you really helped me to be able to share and reshare when you're posting things on the East Whiter City School District Instagram page in particular. So I just want to thank you, I want to thank you for all your forward thinking, for all of the ideas and for being careful, as Mrs. Kennedy was, was sharing. For being watchful to make sure that we're staying within the parameters of our legal boundaries. So thank you again, Mr. Gonzalez, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Okay, I want to welcome now a CAASPP presentation, which we will be having today. It is going to be led by our Education Support Services, beginning with Dr. Aceves, our Assistant Superintendent of ESS. Ms. Ramos also is going to support us as Director of Critical Learning Instruction. Ms. Roman as Director of Categorical Programs, and we're looking forward to hearing about our CAASPP and our LPAC assessment, so thank you very much.
So that presentation got applause, so.
So I'm expecting a lot of applause. Appreciate it, even a standing O would be fine. So thank you so much for the opportunity to present the work, the culminating work of our students, our teachers, our staff last year. And the assessment results from two thousand and twenty-two for our CASP results and our LPAC results last year. I do have with me Ms. Roman and Mrs. Aceves Ramos, who are here tonight to help share in the presentation. As they have also areas of expertise and leadership in these areas. There's a couple, these, these assessments are not new. These are assessments our students take every year in ELA and in math in grades three through eight. Our LPAC is administered, our Summit of LPAC is administered to all English learners. And our science test is also administered to fifth and eighth graders here in East Whittier every year. What is new is that last year's test, as a result of the COVID nineteen, or COVID, COVID nineteen pandemic and school closures. And, and the challenges with potentially having to administer it and from a distance, they did shorten, the CDE did shorten the assessment. And did allow for a shortened assessment last year. And also, our students hadn't taken it since two thousand and nineteen. So this year will serve again, almost like a baseline, again, with our California school dashboard. It won't, we won't necessarily have the colors or be able to show the growth over time, but we will see how our students did overall and within our subgroups. On our California school dashboard, for the purpose of that continuous growth model. And I just want to recognize the wonderful work of our teachers, our students, our staff, our admin, who really overcame significant challenges. Giving this assessment last year caused a lot of anxiety. It was hard for us to, to think about giving our students such a high-stakes test after school closures for such a long time. But we are extremely proud of their work, of all the work of our wonderful teachers, our staff, our students, our families, over the last couple of years. We see this, these results as an opportunity for us to continue to improve and to set some goals for this year in our instructional programs.
So over the next few slides, we'll have the opportunity to look at various CASP results. This first slide here will showcase the percentage of students who met or exceeded the standard at the elementary level in grades three through five. You'll see that the first row there indicates our overall district percentages in grades three through eight. So we can see that fifty-seven point fifty-eight percent of our students, again, in grades three through eight, scored, met, or exceeded the standard. Versus forty-four point sixty-five percent in math. And then all of the other rows indicate, again, those percentages of students who met or exceeded the standard in elementary's, elementary grades across the various school sites. This slide now showcases those percentages, those same percentages for our middle schools. So again, you'll see the overall district percentages in the first row, and then you'll see the percentages across our middle schools, students in grades six through eight. This slide now goes a little bit clearer, now we're able to see the percentage of students who met or exceeded the standard by grade level, okay? The first table showcases those results in English Language Arts. So you can see that those results range from sixty-two point thirty-three percent in seventh grade, being the greatest percentage. Versus fifty-two point thirty-six percent in sixth grade. The second table showcases those results in the area of math. And we can see. And we can see how the greatest percentage of students um, was in third grade with sixty-one point twenty-nine percent. And then we see that percentage decrease across the grades, again, just indicating a need for additional support in the area of math. And later on, we will talk about the specific things that we are doing to support our efforts in improving student success in math. Here, these results showcase um, our students based by, based upon the subgroup data. So that first row showcases the data across our district with all students. So we see that uh, students within grades three through eight, five thousand three hundred and forty-three students took that assessment. Again, our overall percentage of students who met or exceeded was fifty-seven point fifty-eight percent for ELA, forty-four point sixty-five percent in math. And then we see the data for our other uh, subgroups that are considered statistically significant. In order for a subgroup to be listed there, we needed to um, test thirty or more students. So we see our subgroups for socio-economically disadvantaged, English learners, students with disabilities, Hispanic Latino, white, Asian, uh, two or more races, and African American. In addition to taking um, the CASP assessment for English Language Arts and Math, as Dr. Ossevis shared, our fifth and eighth grade uh, students also had the task of taking the CASP, which is the California Science Test, which focuses on understanding the scientific concepts found in Earth and Space Sciences, Life Sciences, and Physical Sciences.
Good evening, Board, members of the community. Um, I will share our data with regards to our LPAC, our English Language Proficiency Assessment for California, for our English learners. So um, as you can see, our data shows um, that we had sixteen point seventy-one percent of our students scoring at a Level Four, which would qualify them for reclassification. And that is a mandatory requirement through CDE that our students um, acquire a Level Four. Um, the breakdown there you see is a Level Three with thirty-eight point six-five percent. You would think I could see better with glasses, but I can't, uh, so I'm gonna turn this way. Um, Level, um, Level Two, uh, thirty point seventy-four percent, and a Level One, thirteen point ninety um, percent. Um, I want to focus us on Level Three as well. We do have quite a few number of our students at a Level Three, which we will continue to target because some of our kid, our kiddos, um, they looked, um, their data looked really good, really great. Um, some of them just missed it by a few points. So um, our EL leads are working diligently with their principals and teachers to identify who are those kids and what else can we do to support them? Um, what are those domains that uh, we can um, help them with so that they can achieve that Level Four um, um, English Language Proficiency and be able to qualify for uh, reclassification? But again, not neglecting our Level Ones and our Level Twos as well. Um, our reclassification rates, as you can see, um, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, um, before the world stopped due to COVID, uh, we had nine hundred and forty-one students um, identified as English learners. Of those E, of those ELs, uh, we had a hundred and ninety-one who reclassified, giving us a twenty percented, a twenty percent of our students who reclassified. As you see there, you have twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty, twenty-one. Um, nineteen, twenty, um, twenty twenty was the year when all testing was suspended um, through the state. So then we came back in twenty twenty, twenty-one, um, very limited, but we did. Some of our students were testing virtually, some were trying to um, test in person. Um, so there was some um, difficulty there with um, just the changes and how we were um, testing our students. So as you can see there, um, that year we had seven hundred and eighty-one students, thirty-two reclassified, giving us a four percent of our students reclassifying. I'm excited to share that in uh, last year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we had seven hundred and forty-five students identified as English learners. We had a hundred and twenty-eight reclassify, which is seventy, seventeen percent of our ELs. If you compare our twenty eighteen, nineteen, and our twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we were getting, we're getting closer to um, to reaching our twenty eighteen, nineteen um, numbers. This year is really going to be the year where we really want to focus on, um, because um, this is a year where we're coming back in person. Um, luckily, you know, COVID is still around, but it's, it's not as disruptive as it was um, when it was nineteen twenty, um, twenty twenty, twenty-one. So we really want to look at those numbers. And I do want to thank um, our um, EL leads, our teachers, for doing that integrated um, ELD in their classrooms, re, really reaching to our ELs, making learning accessible through them, through Thinking Maths, GLAT training, um, sentence frames, visuals, just thank you for um, doing that for our English learners. As we can see through the, from the data, they definitely can learn and they can do it and reclassify. So some of the programs that we're focusing on is, again, designated ELD for English learners, integrated ELD through all the content areas. Um, this year, we are starting a ELD newsletter. We just sent that out as, um, last, this month. And I have to thank our ELA ELD Coach Danielle Froelich, who um, has really taken this on and has um, made it really accessible to our teachers. So if you want any um, tips or how to um, utilize tools for our ELs, go ahead and check out the ELD newsletter. Um, the bilingual aid training, uh, we have that available to our aides um, three times a year. Um, we have our newcomer aid support that we're using our Title III monies with. Bilingual aids are available at each school site um, through the LCAP. We, again, we have our EL leads who are doing an amazing job at each of our school sites, working with our ELs and our newcomers and teachers, ensuring that our kids are getting what they need as far as um, language support. We have Wonders ELD as our curriculum for elementary, English 3D and Language Launch for Middle School. And we did purchase Rosetta Stone for our newcomers. And uh, we have our TKA ELA ELD Coach, um, Danielle Froelich. And then can't forget our parents, who have been instrumental in this process. Our DLEC and ELEC partnerships, um, parent partnerships. Tomorrow, we do have our first DLEC meeting of the year from nine to eleven, so if you're able to make it, we will, we will be here tomorrow, so.
Can I ask a question? Ms. Roman, remind, is, remind me, the, to reclassify an EL student in this district, where are the indicator, where are the assessments that they need to?
Uh, good, yes, good question. So the first criteria obviously is our LPAC score of four, so that is CDE um, state requirement. Um, the other one is that our students have to demonstrate basic skills in English. Um, so um, depending on the grade level, they have to score, um, they have to receive a certain score on the RI or their CASP, depending if that's the testing grade. Um, so they can do both, um, either RI data or CASP data. Um, there's also the teacher evaluation, so that has to do with report cards, grade point averages for our students. Uh, for K one, uh, we're looking at English Language Arts Standards, average of two point seven or higher. In grades two to five, Language Arts Standards, average of two point three or higher. And in grade six through eight, Language Arts Grade C or higher. And last but not least, the most important part as well is our parent input. So we do meet with our parents to ensure that they feel comfortable and feel like we have provided everything that we can for their child in order to um, reach proficiency in English and they feel comfortable releasing the ELD support. But again, we continue to monitor our reclassified students.
And they have to meet all, all of those?
They have to meet all four.
Is there one uh, in particular that's trips, not trip them up, that is the most difficult for them is in this district, or is it across the board, variance between all fours? Is there one in particular that's the challenging one for them?
I would say um, it's a variance um, between all of them. We do have um, our students, if they're struggling with reading, that's obviously going to impact their R, our I, um, scores um, and CASP as well. So it just depends on looking at the domain where they're struggling. That's where you'll see where the, um, what area they did not reach uh, reclassification. So once we know um, how the domain, the, the uh, language domain that they didn't acquire usually ties to one of these criteria, and that's where our EL leads come in and say, okay, they're struggling in writing, so obviously they're not going to get that score. Um, the basic skills, um, they're not going to meet that criteria because they are not proficient in writing. So it does vary depending.
Thank you.
That, I'm sorry, that, that ties in with also um, comprehension, right? I just caught the reading part.
Yes, yes, it does, yes.
Thank you.
And Ms. Roman, I guess I would have a, a question though too. In the meetings that you attend for um, um, people that are in your position, who are looking at ELs, who are looking at our second language learners uh, in this particular time, and I know we don't like this term, but the term is learning loss. Um, are there, are you hearing from others that they are in a similar situation as we are? I mean, I know we're a very small district, but um, A, and then B, what kinds of things are they looking to do to, to lift up those students? Because we know that all across the country, uh, all of our students have suffered. But we know that particularly our EL students, um, you know, have suffered even more so. So can you, can you let me know, has there been any, have you had any opportunities to talk with others or hear what, what other districts are doing?
Yes, during our meetings, during our um, EL collaboratives, um, we do hear across districts how our students, our English learners had struggled during um, the um, COVID um, time only because of the instruction. Um, sometimes they weren't um, receiving that language support at home. If your, if your parents don't speak English, then where are your models? So there, there were some um, consistencies across the um, the different districts where our EL students um, were struggling um, with language proficiency. As far as what we're continuing to do, um, our EL collaborative, uh, we do have the California Roadmap for our English learners. That really is our guide to providing our students what they need. Uh, we're u, utilizing that to um, support our EL leads at the site so that they, they can use that information to support our teachers in the classroom. Um, so they're, they're all correlated, they're all connected. And obviously, our ELD standards and our ELA standards are, are connected as well. So we're really digging in with our um, with our EL leads on how can we really utilize those ELD standards, those ELA standards to bring rigor to, to our students and provide them the language that they support. And we have ELOG money that we're utilizing, uh, we have our Title III designated monies that we utilize as well to provide the, those supports for our, our English learners.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Any other questions?
No, we're not done.
No, I meant. Thank you, Ms. Roman. Appreciate it.
Very much. We just want to wrap up with a, just making sure that we always keep what are, what the, we do see this as an opportunity. We see our test scores every year as an opportunity for us to really reflect and to know where to start and as a good starting point and a data point for all of our students. This year, we are incredibly focused and intentional on looking at our data, um, looking very closely uh, at, at our collaborative structures, the time that we spend in our professional development. We know that our stu, our teachers and our students uh, are looking for more support in the area of math as that was reflected in our test scores. So those are often, those are school-wide goals, as well as district goals for professional development, and also data analysis work that we are doing with all of our teachers, grade level teams, and, and department teams. So you can see, it's all comes back and leads back to our work in MTSS, being sure that we're very uh, careful and intentional about progress monitoring all of our students, providing timely uh, intentional interventions and, and making sure that we are utilizing the, our IASTOSs and the support for our students throughout the day and also offering additional support if needed outside of the school day. Again, back to that work with our wonderful teachers, who are the experts, who are the ones who know what they need, who know how to support and design instruction to meet the needs of our students. So utilizing all of our collaborative structure, structures, P, uh, P, um, PLC time, TTD days, Thursday PLC meetings, our instructional leadership teams, our teacher curriculum committees, to really be sure that we're using, utilizing that time to build their capacity and to, to use data to drive their instruction. And then lastly, we, we do have additional funding that has been put forth uh, by the state to support learning loss, as you mentioned before. Uh, that, we do know that some of our, some of our groups of students suffered more than others and that also uh, we have subject areas, content areas, that seem to have sub, that have suffered more. So looking closely at using those uh, those funding, those ELOG funds as, for site projects and district projects, to be sure that, again, we're intentional about targeting that intervention in the greatest areas of need.
Board, are there any questions or other comments for um, Dr. Ossevis and her team? No?
No, I, 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 again, thank you for sharing the information. I know that the CASP this year was different because you, like you said, don't have the colors, you don't have the comparisons year to year, and so we're looking forward to next year of the full CASP results. And then hopefully next year, we get those double digits up in the LPAC uh, reclassifications and everything there. It's nice to be able to see the growth. I mean, sometimes parents, if you don't see what the local areas are doing and the percentage are just numbers, you see, well, fifty-eight or seventy-two, there's twenty-seven that didn't meet or vice versa. So again, you know, we're always trying to provide the best the teachers are doing their darndest along with our classifieds to provide those supports in the classroom. There's always room for growth. We all know that. But we still have to celebrate where they're at now. And our teachers and our school sites do a great, great thing, uh, great job at that. And, and talk with your colleague district. Yes, there are some districts that are maybe a little bit a step ahead, but we don't focus on them. We focus on, on East Whittier for right now and so, uh, but I think we're in a great place. Looking forward to continue that growth and always willing to learn and try new things.
Any other comments? I also want to thank you, Dr. Ossevis and um, um, Ms. Roman, and also to, um, and I want to make sure I pronounce your name correctly, Ms. Ramos Ossevis, uh, for all your hard work. This is a very challenging place to be at, uh, as we're moving forward, recovering from, and I'm going to say it again, learning loss. It's impacting hundreds of thousands of children um, up and down the state of California and across the country. And I really appreciate all the hard work that our teachers are doing, our classified staff is doing, our administrators are doing, because it is not an easy task to look at the last two years and to figure out and calculate and be very strategic about what we need to do to support our children, but at the same time, making sure that we're bringing that joy of learning uh, to our children, that we're bringing that BCOs to our children, and that we know that the power of those things, our sports, our music, our art, is very impactful on the academic achievement of kids. I, I have a study that I told Mr. Patterson about in twenty eighteen, but it makes a big, big difference. And now that we're going to have that piece and we have it in place, I, I really believe it's going to just partner so well with all the hard work our teachers and our classified staff is doing and our principals doing as well. So thank you so much to, to all of you. I, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I just can't get enough of the applause.
Yay! Okay, our next item is a, an information item and a discussion item. As we have heard, districts are required to legally report during a Board of Education meeting. The Williams Quarterly Report Information for each quarter. Uh, as we look at this board, are there any questions?
May I interject?
Of course.
Uh, just, you know, this is an information o, item only. Um, it is, in fact, is with regard to the math um, curriculum complaint that we received.
Yes.
Um, based upon all of the information that we were provided and that we have as a district in terms of the way that we function, um, we have closed out that complaint. A certified letter was mailed to the home address that we have on file, as well as emailed. Um, any further um, issues with regard to this are going to be referred to either LECO or CDE.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. Any questions, Board? No? Mrs. Carrera or um, Mrs. Sanabi, any further questions? All right. Thank you so much for the clarification, uh, Mr. Patterson. Um, Board, I want to draw your attention to um, discussion item now, number four. If you recall, our, the way that we look at all of these policies is the first reading, we actually go through every single one. We um, acknowledge every single one. We do a first reading of every single one. Um, as we have done in the past, this is now um, a place where we are going to see, are there any, as we look at all those policies, are there any that we want to in particular discuss? Or are we comfortable um, approving um, the bulk of those policies altogether? If there are other, if there are individual policies that we want to discuss, then we can go ahead and do that. Otherwise, I'm going to call for a vote to approve uh, the set of H dash five through H dash twenty. Any questions?
May I just interject?
Yes, no, please.
Um, you know, during the first read, there were no, um, after the board engaged in the conversation on each one of these policies, the only one that was left hanging was the conversation about what it meant to lawfully strike. So we have added clarifying language into both forty-one, forty-one point six and forty-two, forty-one point six. But other than that, the other policies, you know, had no suggestions by the board when we had the first reading.
Mrs. Carrera, is there anything that you would like to add, or are you comfortable um, going forward with uh, the approval of that group?
I'm, I'm fine going forward, because I think that's the one we're dealing a lot about, right?
Okay, great.
I hate to be the stick in the mud, but quick questions. They're not too hard. Just clarifying.
Right.
Question. So do you want to just go down to Board Policy and just go through it? Easy one. So Board, three, five, five, one, A, it's a cafeteria one? So and it, on there, it's B, letter B? And it's the wages, salaries, the benefits of food employees shall be paid for the cafeteria fund. So does that mean when we give a raise to the, to the cafeteria people, that raise comes out of their funds, it's not out of the general fund? Is that how that works? So that doesn't impact us at all? I mean, I know it's not a really massive department, but that's, that's what, they're separate?
That's correct.
Altogether, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. And then, and just to clarify on here, it says, each school day, the school district free of charge should provide breakfast and lunch to every student who requests a meal. That means no one now pays for a meal?
Correct.
So every student, regardless of family's income? Okay, I'm hoping the community hears that. Thank you for that.
We have big banners.
I know, okay, good, yeah. And then another, next board policy, 9322, Section A. And this is on the agenda, meeting materials.
Mr. Della, can I interrupt you really quick?
Yeah.
Before you go on to the next one?
Go.
So if, if they're going to, if the students are going to be receiving free lunch, do those applications still need to be, are they still required? To be completed, to be completed?
They're, they're still required because our unduplicated count, which is part of the funding from the state, is dependent on those applications.
Okay, and is there a due date for those applications?
We tried to get those in as part of the enrollment package and we encouraged families to do it at that time. And those that don't, we do follow up and ask them to complete those for us in the parent portal.
All right, so, okay, thank you.
Of course.
Okay, so again, board policy, 9322, Section A, the agenda content, the last paragraph. So the, it reads under agenda preparation, yes, the last one, please. The last one says, "The board president and the superintendent shall decide whether a request is subject to jurisdiction." So what happens when there's conflicting, the president and the board conflict? Should it be, and I'm just clarifying because what role does the superintendent have that can jurisdiction of the board? Or is that just, because there might be situations where there's conflicting, then we're going to be a stalemate here. So is that need to be cleared up? Because I know it's in here a couple of times. The "and," "the board president and shall decide whether an agenda item is appropriate for discussion in open session." I know it's, you want to hear obviously the superintendent because sometimes he will bring the legal side that we don't have. And so because of that, so I'm not sure if that needs.
So are you saying you would like to have it consistent? Because there are different, there's different things that are harder?
No, I'm just thinking.
When Mrs. Dabs and I were talking earlier about this particular item, she had mentioned that the, you know, so there's here where it says, "The board's president and superintendent shall also decide whether an agenda item is appropriate." And then there's another part where it said that the board president shall.
Yeah.
So we can.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm just wondering, only when there's a conflict. Yeah, that's why I just want to make sure that conflict, because right now there might be a conflict. But in the future, with the future superintendent, future board people, there might be conflict with one or the other. And do we need to not have that? Because that's the first thing that jumped out and I should have caught last time.
And I don't believe that was one of the ones that was underlined though. That's always been our, was it underlined, do you remember?
Yeah. No, I don't know.
I think that's been the language, but we can always change that if you.
Yeah, and I, I just, just didn't know if there was a reason, reasoning behind it or if it's just, it's something that's there or is that something to look at? I'm not sure the way the reps feel, but I'm just looking at it, trying to mediate if there's any issues of conflict the next time. But then I'm also convinced if there's a legitimate reason, I do see the legal side because you get the counsel that can bring that perspective on that. So.
I did ask Superintendent Patterson about that as well. And I said, do we need to have legal look at this to change the language? And.
I mean, we can, I mean, this is our, this one is not guided by code. So this one, you guys, you guys can put whatever you so desire.
So do we want to look at changing that? Do we want to?
I don't know, how do you feel, what does it matter to?
Or we could add like a caveat at the end, like we could add a caveat at the end if there is not consensus or then.
Yeah, then I, because you may be in a position, and again, this might not, it might be a different superintendent and a different set of board.
Sure.
But this is a board meeting run by the five board members and the superintendent is directed or can put a halt to something. But that's what I don't agree with. And so unless there's a legitimate reason for that or keep us out of trouble for some reason, or you know, that kind of advice, which the secretary of the board, but it's like saying, the Secretary of Defense can stop the president from doing something one way or the other. It's like, no, it doesn't work that way. It's consultant, but there's ultimately, there's a final yes or no.
So if you look at the top of, top of B, where it says, "If the board president and superintendent," so this is kind of a, it's not the exact same language, but it's, it's a corollary to that. If the board president and superintendent deny a request, so a board member says, I want this on the agenda. We say, I don't think so. Then the board member can request that it be the, that the item be put on the agenda to determine if it can go on the agenda.
I remember that. So what do you, what do you all think?
You guys just want to take it off and then hold on another time? You guys want to look at it more deeply?
Well, I mean, this is, oh, it's a board policy, so it needs to be, if it's changed here, there's need to be returns, not AR, so.
Well, no, I mean, if we change.
So regardless, the board, yeah, the board is very hard. Like if we, we, then we would still decide if we want to put that on the agenda or not. That first like sentence has it.
Yeah, and whether it's, it was there for 20 years or it's just there now, it's, this is the perfect time for us to change it. If it's, if it's adjusted, if it's a problem, again, if it's just me, that my thought, the foreview, don't agree, then we move on and I'll just live with it.
Or you can change it when you're president next year.
Amen. What do you think, Mrs. Kennedy, any, any comments? No?
If you want to change it however, I guess, I think we're fine with whatever verbiage you want. Like I said, it's like.
Because in theory, that's, in theory, that second caveat captures the concern that Mr. Urtiaga has. Because if, if it's denied from one of us, then you can still say it comes to the board to determine if the board is going to determine.
Right. Are you okay with that?
That's fine, I'm the only one, so not going to.
Well, I did ask.
You know, you know my, my concerns and if it.
Yeah, yeah, if you feel uncomfortable, Mr. Della, I think that, that maybe you could provide verbiage, the same way I'm going to provide verbiage for the bullying one, even though it was recommended by staff to keep it the way it is. I, I, yeah, I, I would agree with you if, if you would feel more comfortable changing the verbiage and then you just provide a new verbiage like I am.
That's something, do you just want to pull that, that one from here?
Do you want to just pull that one? Do you want to let it go forward and then bring it back?
I mean, we can just pull that and we can pull it because it's already an existing policy. So all we would do is go back to the previous version and just keep everything else that was there.
But then, I'm saying, we could just vote on it.
But we can also do what we're doing with 93. We don't have to go through the rigmarole of, of doing all of that. If we just approve this policy as it is with all of the other changes, then just like we have with 9323, we're bringing that back separately.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with the first reads.
Right.
And then Mr. Urtiaga, when he determines what language he feels comfortable with, we can put it as a, as another time.
And then we, we discuss it and then vote on it. Are you, are you okay with that then? Okay.
Okay.
All right. I did, I didn't want to make, leave Mr. Sanabria out of the discussion.
Because I'm not there.
Oh, we're, we're going to come back after and.
You're going to come back?
Yeah.
Similar to what you're doing.
Okay.
All right, okay, so thank you, everyone. So this is an action item. So before we go to a vote, since we've already had our discussion, can I get a motion to approve?
I move the recommendation of the superintendent items, H5 through H20 be adopted as submitted.
Can I get a second? All right, it's been moved by Mr. Alparicio, seconded by Mr. Urtiaga. I don't know if there's any further discussion since we've already had discussion. All right, seeing none. Ms. Hernandez, would you please poll the board?
Mr. Sanabria?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Aparicio?
Yes.
Mr. Urtiaga?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dabs?
Yes. All right, thank you, everyone. We are now on to item 21, is that correct?
Correct.
Just want to make sure. This is a discussion, action item. Before we move forward with discussion, can I get a motion to approve?
I saw move.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Alparicio, seconded by Mrs. Kennedy. This is a discussion now, adoption of Board Violet, 9323, meeting procedures. We are going forward with discussing, making a couple of adjustments. And I just want to make sure that the board has an opportunity to, to look at this and make any comments or if they have any, or Mrs. Carrera or Mr. Sanabria. So I'll start with, no, Mrs. Kennedy, Mr. Alparicio, I see you. No, you're good. Mr. Urtiaga?
Yes. That provides a more opportunity or streamline, more, more consistent meeting and allows for.
We really need to work on that. Mr. Sanabria, any comment? Mrs. Carrera, any comments?
No, not coming.
All right, all right. Hearing none, Mrs. Hernandez, can you please poll the board?
Mr. Sanabria?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Aparicio?
Yes.
Mr. Urtiaga?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dabs?
Yes. All right, thank you, everyone. Item number 22, this is also a discussion action item, Request to adopt resolution number 10-22 slash 23, California Schools Healthy Air, etc. Before we have any discussion, can I get a motion to approve?
I saw move.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Moved by Mr. Alparicio, seconded by Mrs. Carrera. Board, any discussion on this item? Any comment, Mr.?
May I add a kudo?
Yes, please.
Because prior to even starting with our district, Ms. Rill had emailed me and asked me, hey, have you guys applied for this CalShake grant? And I said, what CalShake grant? And then she, she worked with Mr. Lopez and with our team. And we, the end result is getting $941,000 that we would not have had. Thank you very much.
That's amazing, yeah. Thank you. That's awesome. That's so, so exciting. Any comments, Board?
She said she wanted to keep this as a change order. So for any future change orders, she has a $941,000 bank to pull from.
Well, thank you very much for that. I appreciate you bringing that this way.
Yeah, absolutely. Especially as we're not going to get any cooler, we're going to get hotter and more days where we're much higher on the temperature level. I just really thank you so much, Ms. Rill, for, for doing that for us. Any other comments? Thank you, Mrs. Carrera. Mrs. Sanabria, any comment? All right, hearing none, can we get, will you poll board, Mrs. Hernandez?
Mr. Sanabria?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrera?
Yes.
Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Aparicio?
Yes.
Mr. Urtiaga?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dabs?
Yes. All right, we are now on to item number 23, Board. This is a discussion action item, approval of the certification of signatures for the districts revolving cash and cash clearing accounts with Wells Fargo Bank. Before we have any discussion, can I get a motion to approve?
I saw move.